Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the Town and Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, February 12, 2019. First item on the agenda, 15 minutes, I'll take a motion to approve it minutes of February 17, 2019.
Second. I mean, so moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Comment? For those on the agenda, none. Let's get to the first item. And ladies and gentlemen, this is an announcement with respect to the upcoming public information meetings we got in the water company purchase. But before doing so, I'd like to say that last week, we had two meetings. My colleagues were here most of the, most of the evenings during the week on water company type stuff. And we took a vote to advance the purchase and acquisition of the water company, which represented a culmination of literally thousands of hours. And I'd like to recognize in particular the significant contribution that's been made by Jonathan Asher and Edward Siegfried in that regard. This town is fortunate to have the kind of skills and people willing to offer them and share them with us for the greater good. And to that end, you know, we're going to go into a different phase of this effort, which began almost 10 years ago. And we're going to lead off with a public information forum. And that'll be on the 9th of March. I believe it will be at the middle school. And we'll continue our efforts to educate the citizens with respect to the issues that are of interest to them and continue on with an eye towards having a fully informed electorate at the 2019 annual town meeting. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Asher. Thank you, Mr. Siegfried. Thank you to the board. That would be Joshua Crumholtz, Joseph Beerworth, and Robert Higgins. Great work, ton of dedication, can't appreciate it enough. Let's turn to the next item on the agenda, and that is a public hearing on the application for a Section 15 One and malt beverages licensed by Bloomy Rhine, DBA Bloomy, Bloomy Rhine LLC, DBA Bloomy Rhine, 21 Main Street, Mary Sullivan Gonzalez is manager.
She's here.
She's here. Would you like to join us at the table, please?
Hi, Mary.
Hello. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I was expecting a little cheese, Mary, but it's in the trunk of my car, Karen.
All right. So, just for the benefit of the residents at home watching, perhaps you could just identify yourself and describe your business, where it's located, and your offerings.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying that my husband and myself have been members of this fabulous community for over 20 years. And we've had a business here in the Hingham Square for, I can't believe to say now, nine years. And we offer artisanal cheeses, specialty foods, and we have an amazing culinary cafe. So, we are very much proponents of having more offerings in the square. It's a beautiful square. We've always tried to make it be a highlight and have, gather people there. A lot of people meet each other there in the shop. And we want to see the square flourish. The asking of this particular license is simply from the asking over the years of my customers. They'll come in, they'll get some cheeses, they'll get some beautiful foods, and they always say to me, "Well, just, if I could just get a nice bottle of wine, something that you might recommend, or maybe a nice ale to go with the cheeses, or the food, or the meats, that would be amazing, and it would be kind of like, you know, nice to have under one roof." So, we found that this was available, and we've always been watching our baby grow. We call it our baby, because it takes time to build a business and build a relationship with people. And we're in a place now where we can offer something like this for convenience and an amenity, but the main reason we really want it is, is to kind of be a curator, someone that kind of helps marry things together, the foods and the wine. And again, it's just for picking up a bottle, taking it home with you. It's not drinking in the shop, because we'd never found that that was something that we were intending to ever do. So, it wouldn't be a large amount of either one of, either wine or beer, but there'll be select things that we'll just have on the shelves for people to purchase. So, again, we're not trying to be a package store. We're not trying to be everything to anyone under one roof, because I don't think that helps the square or helps anyone. I just, we really believe in having it be just an amenity and also help our business bring the next level of excellence to what we do. So, thank you.
Questions from my colleagues.
Mary, where will the wine and beer be located in the shop?
Absolutely. So, this is a learning curve as well for us, so we're kind of learning about that. But obviously, we would want things in the store to be visible so people could see where it is, but we're also aware that we are community-based. We have families that come in. So, that will be worked on, but my feeling is very close to the kitchen and close to where we are, the register. You know the layout of the store. It's important that it's watched. It's watched and it's monitored. And just to give you an outline of the store, Robert and I are not owners that open the door, put some staff on, and then come back at 6:00 and collect the, whatever that is for the day. We work there six days a week, 12- to 13-hour days, and we don't leave our shop unattended. I also think about those concerns when I think about staffing, who I want to be around, things like that. Not even think, I thought I was even going to say this, but I'd like to mention it. Robert and I both met in bartending schools, so we go way back when it comes to, you know, that kind of thing. So, we know both sides of it, but the resale side, again, would just be a selection of something. And in the store would be, some things would probably be around where you could see that we have it in the other front of the store, but that would have to be behind something and kind of locked.
Okay.
And monitored. Yes, absolutely. Again, you've seen the layout of the store. It's not a huge store, and I don't want it to be. It's about the food and the cheese first, and the specialty foods. This is an amenity that we're offering our customers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief, you're good, you're good with this? Well, Mary, you know, I've appreciated your commitment to the square over the long haul, and I do think that you, you are a vital presence there, but also supportive of your, your colleagues and your, and the merchants along that whole row.
Absolutely. Yes.
I was interested as well, in Mary's question in terms of where in the shop you would situate the alcohol, because I do, I do agree with you that while the shop is small, it would need to be in an area that you, you felt that you could, you could control.
Absolutely.
I thought the, the application, you know, is full, the serve-safe qualification, you know, is something that we've added fairly recently, and you have that.
Absolutely.
So...
It's a necessary thing.
Yeah. And, you know, and I, I think if I were sort of in that neighborhood there, I would be concerned potentially if I, you know, if I didn't know your plan, that this could change the character of the store. And as you've expressed it, it does seem like just a, a great amenity and something that people kind of expect when they're buying high-end cheese and, you know, specialty foods.
Absolutely. That's exactly the way we see it. And if I could just add one more thing, we had spent a little bit of time recently in Europe, and I really studied how they do their smaller stores like ours. There's a lot of cheese shops everywhere, pretty much on every corner, and I noted and noticed that the bottles, and they're very select, and they're not a lot. There's not rows of this. We don't want to compete with anybody in the neighborhood. We just want to have some things that people can take with them. I noticed it was, it was near the cheeses and kind of pairing them together. So, that was there. In other words, this is the person's idea of, this would be great with this.
Yep.
It's not going to be 7,000 bottles of Chardonnay.
Okay.
I don't have any interest in that. I actually could not do that. You know what I mean? Yes, yeah.
Yep. I'm all set.
I would just like to add that the square is a very important business component of the town, and I think that you bring delightful flavor to it.
Thank you. That's very kind. Thank you.
You have.
We try.
And I've seen you, without you knowing I'm observing, you ate very well, so...
You never know.
He must have got me on a good day.
Like your mother said, behavior...
Exactly.
No, I mean, you, you go out of your way to remember people's names, to ask about people's children. I mean, that's the sense of community that's down there.
Thank you.
And this just augments, I think, your, your ability to provide service to your customers that you do now on, on just a grand scale.
Absolutely. And let me also say this, the big dream for Robert and I at one point was a restaurant, a restaurant. But if I ever just did the restaurant, I would seat you to your table and never really get to know any of you. This has been a joy and a blessing for us, because I know people that I would have never known in this capacity, because they're coming in for little bites, or someone's coming in after a doctor's appointment, or, and I don't want to change that for them. I don't want, and I want to change it for the moms that come in with their daughters and eat kale salad. What two-year-old is eating kale salad? So, I don't want to change that.
I know.
We don't want to change that instead. I mean, I got, you know, people a lot older than that haven't even tried kale yet, but we'll work on you.
Not naming any names, Paul Hailey.
We'll get you, we'll get you. No, we really, Karen, thank you for saying that. We don't want to change that, that look at the store. If it does that, I don't think it's going to be good for us. So, that's not going to happen.
Fantastic.
Before we vote, is there anybody like to say anything? Okay. We'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the application for retail package store wine and malt beverages licensed by Bloomy Rhine LLC, DBA Bloomy Rhine, 21 Main Street, Mary Sullivan Gonzalez, manager. This vote is subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
I got cheese in the back hallway. No. That's not okay.
Kale salad for the guy in the middle.
Bring it on. Next on the agenda, police sergeant appointment. Deputy Chief, join us, please.
I don't have any cheese.
I do have a snow shovel, though.
You got other things. All right. What was yours, Chief?
I didn't know if, you know, we were here, the last session doing this, we had three openings. We were able to, following the rules of civil service, we were able to fill two last week. And we had to reapply through civil service, and we have the one opening to fill now. So, that's why we couldn't get this all done in one, one, one fell swoop. After careful deliberation, the deputy chief and I unanimously recommend Officer Nicholas Smith for promotion to the rank of permanent full-time police sergeant. Officer Smith has been steadfast in his dedication to the promotional process, taking the past two sergeants tests. He scored well on both tests, was interviewed and ranked highly both times by the internal interview board, which consisted of police chiefs from area communities. Officer Smith has been proactive in the enforcement of Massachusetts law and Hingham regulations. His work productivity is fair and balanced, and he remains active in the community outreach programs, is always available when called on. Officer Smith has been very active in the deployment and maintenance of technology in the Hingham Police Department. He has assisted in the installation and testing of new electronics, and serves as a point of contact for officers for any issues that arise for the many systems we maintain. This only adds to his strengths as a field training officer, a mentor, and a resource for new and veteran officers alike. Over the last several years, I've had the occasion to work with Officer Smith in his junior leader, union leadership role, representing the patrol officers of this department. Having spent many years in that role myself, I have always believed that it provides unique insight and can be a learning experience into the management of the department. I have observed that Officer Smith has always been professional and dedicated to the issues involved, and very confident that he will continue to share our common goal of making the Hingham Police Department a better organization and workplace. We are very confident that Officer Smith possesses all the qualities and the values that we demand and expect from our superiors, supervisors. We look forward to working with him in his new role. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, deputy. Questions, comments from my colleagues?
Officer Smith, I think I first met you when you came in to interview the night after your wife gave birth to your son. And I was impressed with you then, and you had had a very long 24 hours. And I think I thought it was not a matter of, I thought it was a matter of when you would be named a sergeant, not if. And it's a pleasure to do that tonight. I would also just like to commend Officer Sullivan and Officer McCracken. We are so fortunate in the police department that we had three very qualified candidates. And my hope for Officer Sullivan and Officer McCracken is that for both of them, it is also not a matter of if, but a matter of when.
Thank you, Mary.
I echo Mary's sentiments. You know, it was a very instructive process these last couple of evenings going, both talking to you during the interview phase and this, this next level of the hiring phase. You know, I thought all five candidates presented extremely well. It gave me great faith in the ongoing opportunity, I think, to cultivate leadership in the department, and in particular, leadership characteristics in Officer Sullivan and Officer McCracken that I think they've, they've, they've demonstrated well. Sergeant, I am Sergeant Smith. I'm, I'm really glad to see you before us tonight and really excited to take this vote.
You may not remember it, but you and I met when I rode with Brian on his last night on the job. And I enjoyed watching you in action, so to speak. And it's no surprise to me that you're sitting here today. The department, the town is lucky that we have the caliber of people we do, serving in the ranks of the police, and it's a pleasure to raise them up into a more meaningful role with respect to supervision and oversight. I take this vote with a lot of pleasure and satisfaction. And I congratulate Officer Sullivan as well, and Officer McCracken. It's, it's good to see the bench strength in the department, what it is. And on that basis, I'll make a motion that the board appoint Nicholas Smith as permanent full-time police sergeant for the Town of Hingham.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you, Chief. Deputies, gentlemen, good night. All right. Continuing on, at this point in time, we are going to continue with our review of the warrant articles for this year's town meeting. And the first warrant article for consideration tonight is Article N, which will be the consideration of the Community Preservation Committee Proposals. So, would you like to join us, Carol? Larry. Larry's got his boots on. Ready for action.
Sludged in in her boots.
Well, remembering sure as we had a presentation not too long ago on these...
We're back.
Have there been any changes since that time, or are you still in sync with what we had proposed earlier?
Pretty much so.
The same people are in sync.
All right. Well, consistency.
Well put.
Yeah.
Do my colleagues have any questions before we move to that part of the evening when we take the vote?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I just make one comment, because I've, I've talked offline to you, Carol, about it, and we talked a little bit about it when you were in, when we were in the joint session a couple of weeks ago, and that's with respect to the, the grant made to the Plymouth River School Playground. You know, it just, it's, it's a different application of CPC funds that I think we've, we've traditionally seen. And it's kind of caused me to think about how we evaluate capital and what sort of capital we make available, and how do we analyze that in the process of our capital planning? So, you know, I think it's a very, as, as Mary said, I think it's an extremely worthy project. And, you know, I will vote to support it tonight, but I think it's made, it's just caused me to think about how best to, to sort of undertake, undertake capital, particularly maybe school capital, and making sure that we're, I think we are identifying the kinds of resources that both the school and the town need to be able to improve their capital infrastructure, in particular, in this case, you know, to bring a, an existing playground up to code. So, again, I think it's an extremely worthy project, but, you know, maybe the inside baseball piece of this is, you know, gee, should we evaluate where we're deriving resources for certain of the capital needs of the town? That's all.
And as we said last time we were here, it was a matter of kind of some horse trading. We, to get what we really wanted for affordable housing, repairing the bills and other projects, this was kind of the balance to that. And it's a, you know, it's a legitimately tough question. It's a wonderful project, and so worthy, but it is taking money from our much smaller bucket and putting it into the humongous school committee budget. Still needs to be done, but it was a matter of who pays for it, and we fought over it, and this is where we ended up as a committee.
Well, it's, it's definitely one of the treats of the warrant cycle, because I think you get to think about some of the unique aspects of the activities and the projects that are going on in town in those very particular categories that CPC funds that aren't typically part of the normal kind of routine activity that, that we get before us. So, it is a little bit of a, I don't know, liberal arts study of town government. So, I appreciate that.
I would, I would just add, and I know we've, we've had some, you know, conversations in the, in the last few weeks, oftentimes during the warrant cycle, there's a topic that kind of keeps coming up more like a question, and I think the theme of, the question that keeps popping up in a number of different ways, I think are some questions around capital, which, you know, I, I look forward to us having some, some more substantive discussions after the warrant. I think it's hard to have philosophical discussions when you have projects staring you in the face. And so, for that reason, I'm, I'm going to support all of the CPC recommendations. But I would like to have that conversation, because, you know, just on CPC, as you're looking to balance a lot of things, in our role, we're looking to balance a lot of things as well. And I think what I, you know, what I mentioned the last time around is that for, for some of the very worthy projects in CPC, there isn't another funding source. So, I, I think this board is about trying to kind of lift everybody up, and so we want to make sure that we can do that as much as we can. And, you know, I would, I would just also thank the CPC and, and the team for, you know, all of, all of the great work. And, you know, you, you take your fiduciary role really seriously. You know, it's, it's a million dollars. It's a lot of money. And you take it very carefully, not only in awarding the grants, but then managing the process after the fact to make sure projects are completed, any unexpended funds are returned. And I think, I think that credibility is one of the reasons why CPC has been so successful in this community.
Thank you.
Well said.
I've displayed an inclination in the past, but I'm going to affirm it once again. I'm thankful that you've elected to support the preservation of the bell tower. I think the sounds that come from that structure transcend centuries. And I'm glad you recognize the importance of keeping that going. So, thank you so much. Anybody in the audience want to chat before we take the vote? Okay. Take a motion.
I move favorable action on Article N, Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming back.
Thanks, CPC committee members in the audience.
Okay. Article Q, additional engineering funds for completion of Route 3A design. See Mr. Fernandez in the audience. And Mr. Sylvester. Roger, Harry. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
All right. Roger, why don't you take us through what you, you're looking for here?
Article Q would seek to fund the balance of the 3A design and permitting, just in terms of context and history. We, the project really has been ongoing since 2015, but in, in annual economy in 2015, funded $400,000 to go towards the initial design and permitting of the project. At that time, it was clear that there was not going to be enough money to finish the project. When we combined that with the pilot program that we, we undertook, the additional studies that I think were really fruitful and were worth undergoing, it really built the consensus, I think, with other communities. That was a year-long process. What we did is we got together with the team, the consultant, the 3A task force, my office, my, my people, and then we sought to see what, what was going to be required to finish the project, to bring it through the full tip process, the transportation improvement program. And so, that value, I believe, is $195,000, and that should get us to 100% design and permitting documents, barring any unforeseen events.
Questions from my colleagues?
No. I think I'm good.
I have a comment.
You know, real, just real quick, this is Tom Fund Balance? This is being funded from...
Yes.
That's the...
Yes.
Okay.
I've had the pleasure of working with Roger and Harry on this project. I'm a member of the 3A task force. Judy Sneath is the chair, Deirdre Anderson, Alan Peral, Bryce Blair. And I have to say, I think you've done a really fine job on that, Roger and Harry.
Thank you.
Very fine. This has been a challenging project in the sense that we've not only had to convince our own residents, but we've had to convince the residents of the town hall. And I think we've done that. I enjoyed getting the 25% design plan today. I think we're well on the way, and I look forward to seeing this project completed. So, thank you very much.
I will say, as I was, you know, we've been working with the state. We've gotten some correspondence. We know the project's going to be in excess of $7.5 million, and in talking to them, it looks like the project will be funded in the next tip process. That means state money going towards fixed-up roads. So, we're happy about that.
That is excellent news. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Comments before we vote? Hearing none? Entertained a motion?
Recommend favorable action of Article Q, additional engineering funds for completion of Route 3A design.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming in.
Have a good night. Okay. Article P, Sasha Country Club Equipment. See the Country Club is here?
Next.
Going through. Mr. Whale and Ms. Smith.
How are you?
Dressed in a wintered gear.
Exactly.
Wipe off a couple cars to go.
Thank you for braving the inclement weather to come out and help us get through the proposed articles. So, what do we have here?
So, we originally requested $530,000 for 12 pieces of equipment. We've since amended the request to $415,000. This was going to be a complete change-out of all our equipment for, from fairways to greens to roughs, mowers, tees, and approaches, all the equipment. After looking at it, we wanted to bring it down a little bit, which would be about savings of about $30,000 a year. Initially, we were looking to go into a lease purchase option, but after meeting with the capital committee, it was advised that we should go with a straight-out purchase. The lease option would be about a 5% annual percentage rate that they would charge us, where our town rate is about 3.5%, so we would, you know, save roughly about $20,000 a year by going that road. And we've since, you know, looking at the budget and, you know, making sure that we're watching our expenses, we kind of, I prioritized our, you know, equipment in the 3T and approaches, 12 rows, which are about five years old now. We feel that we can, with maintenance, proper maintenance, we can get a few extra years out of that and push that purchase out a couple of years, and that would save us between $25,000 and $30,000 annually. So, we've kind of at the, changed the, amended the request to $415,000 for a turf applicator, which is the $55,000 piece of equipment that basically applies all the materials and applicates, all the applications to all the fields across town, but also the, the, the country club, two rough mowers, two fairway mowers, two green mowers, and two turf rollers as well. So, that's the, the request that we have right now. And we'll be able to use the other turf, the one that we have currently, it's about eight years old, but we'll be able to use that on other fields, and we'll keep that piece of equipment. It's, you know, reaching its end life, but we're moving forward with it. And this is an enterprise fund... And this is an enterprise fund, obviously, so we're going to be supporting it through all the revenues that we receive.
Questions from my colleagues.
Kevin, do you get a sense, like, do other municipal clubs buy their stuff or lease their stuff, or is it sort of a combination, depending on what you're looking to?
I think it's definitely a combination. I think when, you know, I was with the state, we definitely did leasing of equipment. I think more golf carts and things of that nature, it depends on what the type of equipment is. Some equipment you can get like seven to eight years with proper maintenance, other things like golf carts are more like shorter lifespan, so I think it depends on the type of equipment that you are purchasing or the type of equipment that you need.
Okay. And then, the turf applicator, the second turf applicator, so you make these available with your staff to treat other fields in town?
Yeah, so we, obviously, we work with the school department, recreation as well, so we do all the ball fields. Our staff works with those, the other departments in town to offer the services that, and expertise that we do have in, you know, turf management, and they work with those departments to maintain those fields, whether it's, you know, the application of, you know, materials to, you know, ensure the fertilizer and things of that nature. So, the one that we do have currently is at its end of its life, but it's something that we could use on the other ball fields until it finally dies.
And is there a charge back to those departments for that, or is that something?
Currently, we don't charge, we charge basically for materials and for labor at this point in time. We do not charge back for equipment and things of that nature, depreciation of equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate that you're looking out a few years. I mean, I'd love to see a circumstance where you're, you know, the dollar amount of capital replacement, you know, from one year to another is fairly constant, so you don't have a lot of, you know, spikes and...
Right. Well, and I think this was an attempt to do that, where we would get into like a five-year, almost annually, a five, you know, year plan, where every five years we'd be swapping out our equipment, so we don't have, you know, old equipment, and where it's, we're continuously fixing it and things are down. But I think, you know, the equipment that we did push out is Toro equipment, which is a little bit more expensive on the front end, but it's, obviously, it lasts longer. So, we feel comfortable with the recommendation that we'll push those, that, those purchases out for a few years, and then, you know, but the remaining of the requests will move forward, which will be a big help as far as our maintenance and staff, as far as keeping up with all the equipment that we need to, as far as maintenance is concerned.
And I would just mention to the public that while this is the country club, again, as Mr. Whelan suggested, because this is an enterprise fund, all of the expenses for the country club are funded through user rates and revenue derived from the country club. We in-town meeting have to, we vote to approve these things, but it's literally a pass-through of our budget, for lack of a better word.
And was your committee on board with this approach?
Mr. Christie.
Yes, so, I would say, you know, sort of to your point, Mary, and to Karen's point, it's an enterprise fund, but it's also, you know, we're sort of a good neighbor to the rest of the, the rest of the town. People, everybody uses the country club, and we provide a lot of service that there might not be necessarily a financial kickback, you know, if you will, on capital, but I think everybody uses the country club, and it's a great community asset, so we continue to do that. And, yes, the Country Club Management Committee has, you know, reviewed all the plans. You know, things have been changing. Mary, to your point about coming up with more of maybe a balanced capital plan, you know, Kevin's been here since August. I've been on the CCMC since October, so things are changing, and we're definitely getting, I think, sort of hitting some stride in terms of both cutting on the expense side, as well as looking at what we're going to do to, you know, maybe smooth out some of our revenues, you know, take a look at what we have at the country club today, and take a look at potential new resources moving forward.
Great.
Who are you going to do with the old equipment?
Toro, or the, we'll purchase it through statewide contracts, so all this equipment is already on statewide contracts, so they will, they will give us an assessment of what the value is, and we will, you know, trade it in.
Trade it in.
Much of it is not, you know, worth a significant amount of money.
I would also imagine, or anticipate, that you would be able to secure all this very expensive new equipment very well.
Yes, yeah, we will. I mean, we have a great maintenance staff to make sure that we take care of all of our equipment, both George Watt and also Mark License are, you know, constantly making sure that our equipment is, all the maintenance is done, you know, preventative maintenance as well, you know, golf carts, everything, so we do a great job, so we'll make sure that we ensure that it's well taken care of through the lifespan of the equipment's time.
And this particular equipment would be stored in the maintenance shed, right?
Yeah, that's correct. We have, the green barn that we do have, it will be stored in there. I mean, the only thing that's kept outside is the golf carts, and we did try to find a place for the, a home for them for the winter. It's just difficult because of, you know, the requirements to drain them of, you know, of fuel, which then can dry out some of the inner workings of the golf carts, so it makes it more problematic, so, but we worked, working on that as well. But all this equipment does stay indoors.
Okay. Hello, comment? Hearing none. Take your motion.
I move favorable action on Article P, Sushaw Country Club Equipment.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
That's the law. Okay.
Can I just point out, Mr. Healy, that I just asked Mr. Whelan, he's officially been here for six months. I'd say that was a pretty good hire.
Not that you're taking any credit.
He'll be out every night this week, for the town to hang him things, including Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
All right. Article U, plastic bag reduction and encourage reusable bags bylaw.
Depends if Michelle says yes. Because Dad's got an apple on it.
It's an HPB.
Outside of my world.
How long is the presentation?
It's only six slides.
Perhaps while we're trying to set up, you can take us through with words what you wish to do.
Is anyone from the committee joining us?
I'm going to hear and support. Because English is a second language for me. So, this actually started over the summer, in regards to...
I'm sorry if I'm a little off my game here, but typically, I ask people to identify themselves for those that don't know who you are at home.
Andrew Air?
Oh, are you Andrew?
Good, how are you?
Nice to see you again. My name's Paul Here. All right, so you have a proposal to get rid of the plastic bags I used to put my garbage in?
Yeah, well, not the plastic bag for your garbage.
Okay.
So, this actually started as a discussion over the, over the summer, back on social media. People talking about when the Cohasset warrant passed, and we got, so there's a ban, and discussion was like, why doesn't Hingham have one? So, you know, we did some research, and I actually approached Janice and Brenda about it, and, you know, joined their team, and found out that we originally had, approached this back in 2015, and at that time, it was, you know, we withdrew the warrant because of socialization, essentially. This time, the difference being, is at that time, there wasn't as many cities and towns with plastic bag bans and everything. Currently, there is 92 cities and towns in the Commonwealth with a plastic bag ban, and...
It should work if you can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stay with me here.
I'm sorry, bear with me, folks. Would you like to do Article I while they get ready? It may not take very long.
Sure.
It's the perennial article.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you for that suggestion, Tommy.
Takes this one off of me, and he took it.
I'm going to continue watching you. Sure, that's very helpful.
Just sit here silently.
They're scaring me anyway, so.
Got my friendly face.
And that doesn't happen all the time.
So, Article I is a perennial article. This is to determine whether or not the town will appropriate the receipts from the electric light department.
How much will that be for this year?
$450,000 floor. We've seen the average of each of the last, I think, three or four years become, come in within, literally, within a couple of thousand dollars of $500,000.
And we're carrying, I know we're going to see the forecast in a few minutes, I think we're, are we?
I believe 500.
Yep.
Question?
So, I just want to, I just want to mention to the public, I mean, again, that some of these things kind of intersect with other warrant articles. The, you know, Hingham Municipal Light Department does not, you know, they do not pay taxes, but what they do is they give the town a payment in lieu of taxes, which is called a pilot. And so, that actually kind of keeps the revenue base of the town hall there, contributing to the tax base, which we very much appreciate. And I would just mention that if the town were to make favorable action on the water company articles, the amount of money that is currently paid to the town in property taxes would be set up as a pilot, just in a similar fashion. So, you know, this time next year, if the town bought the water company, we would be doing this. It's about a million dollars in property taxes, so, I know that question has come up relative to other warrant articles as well. This is, this is how we capture that revenue.
Great. Entertained a motion.
I move favorable action on Article I, dispersment of electric light department receipts.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, while we're there, I would ask that we defer Article H to February 26th meeting.
Fine. Andrew.
That's all I can do for you.
All right, just to kind of give, kind of give you the scope here was why this whole stuff is being. So, as you can see, worldwide, about five trillion plastic bags are produced annually, you know, and 80% of those bags are used in North America, Western Europe. And Americans throw away about 100 billion plastic jobs annually. Based on that data from the 2013 EIR report, Hingham uses about 11 million bags a year, and that's about 511 bags per person per year. And most of it is discarded after one use. Average use time is 12 minutes, and only 2% to 7% of the plastic bags are returned recycling.
Wow. Say that again.
2% to 7% are returned for recycling. So, to kind of show you this graph, you know, this is in 2017, for the first time within 30 years, that the Ocean Conservatory Conservancy Group has done a coastal cleanup, and in 2017, the first time in 30 years, is that plastic took all 10 spots, edged out glass. And in 2018, that same list was a downfall, pretty much that data. So, so here is currently the cities and towns in the Commonwealth that have plastic bag bans, they're all in blue. You can see the majority are coastal cities. And the ones that are in the red stripes, those are currently cities and towns that have sponsored the state bill that's currently in the House right now. Our rep, John Machino, and Senator Patrick O'Connor have both sponsored this bill. And, you know, if we were to pass this, we would join the other 92 cities and towns in Boston, the Commonwealth. Currently, within Plymouth County, Bridgewater, Ducksbury, Marshville, Pembroke, Plymouth, and Situate have the ban, and Cohasset's in Norfolk County, as we know. And just to be aware, in 2019, Hull, Noel, and Hanover are preparing bag warrants for articles, and also Hanson. Next slide. This is kind of the breakdown of, per Commonwealth, the percentage of the population that each represents. The total sum of the population of the Commonwealth, it's 42% are currently under a plastic bag Also too, with Boston coming online in December, Springfield is currently looking at using a plastic bag ban. They'd be the largest city out in the western part of the state, and so that would be, you know, the other big town would be Worcester, essentially, that haven't considered yet, So, this is, this is something I did in January, this is some kind of, kind of illustrating, so, and just kind of making a point here, is that, so Situate passed a plastic bag ban back in November 14th and stuff, and their bylaw actually takes place starting in March. You know, the bylaw that we're submitting is actually six months if we pass it. But the reason why I took this picture, so I was down in Situate Harbor, it was back in January, when we had that big nor'easter, and there was actually a plastic bag in the harbor, and it's actually from the 99. And the reason why I'm making that point is, is that as other communities around us are passing this, and if we don't pass this, we're actually contributing to their pollution. So, that's, you know, a lot of this is also kind of the good neighbors. The closest 99 restaurants, as you can see, are Rockland, Pembroke, and Hingham. So, you know, I'm not saying that came from Hingham, but obviously, they all have a 99 in Situate, right? So, it came in somewhere, which is part of the issue in regards to these plastic bags, is they kind of blow free, and they eventually make their way down to the ocean. So, what we did is, beginning in December, you know, we reached out to the downtown associations, and we went door-to-door and actually surveyed the businesses, this is one of the things. We also met with the downtown associate last week for their monthly meeting, and it was just kind of a simple survey in regards, you know, questions. What are you currently using? Do you believe it'll impact you? And if you switch, would you promote reusable bags? You know? As you can see, the, for impact, we have, what, 6% there? And the majority of the businesses, 89%, say it wouldn't impact them. Only 10% of the businesses use plastic only. And then, you know, 19% is both paper, solely paper, 67%, and others that they're using like cloth or burlap, so they're not using either. And you see, over 50% would actually assist in promoting reusable bags. Blank, meaning they just didn't answer that question, and was it 4% maybe, and 10% no, because, you know, the type of business they were. You know, obviously, you know, one of the things I learned, and, you know, as Steve and I were going around and everything, like, we had gone to the South Shore Bank, and they actually do plastic bags for change, and we didn't know that. So, you know. Just one more. And so, so by passing, you know, having the bylaw and having folks vote over, we're hoping to add pressure to the increasingly strong message of legislation that Massachusetts adopted statewide, and the bill has already been filed for 2019, and it calls for a ban of plastic checkout bags and a 10-cent fee. Now, we as a town can't do that because of, you know, but that would have to come from the state. So, one of the caveats that we had done, or obvious as it was a concern last time, was the recyclable material part of paper, and, you know, we put it in whether it was just a virgin paper bag or recyclable paper bag, that to kind of help our downtown businesses not incur a larger cost.
So, if I don't, if you don't mind, I'd like to just inform the board of a couple of things. So, Mr. Air came in to see me two months ago?
Yeah.
Three months ago. Asked me what I thought about this, this idea of a warrant article. What I suggested to him at the time was that he circulate the idea around with the businesses in town, and I would suggest by that previous slide, it looks like he has done exactly that. So, that was my guidance for him. He's also apparently found a sponsor for the article in the Cleaner Greener-Hingham Committee, which is also helpful. This is not a, this is not a citizens petition article, though it feels a little like it, because this is the type of article we often get through with the citizen petition, but this was sponsored... the type of article we often get through with the citizen petition. But this was sponsored, in fact, by one of our committees, the Cleaner Greener Hingham Committee. Formerly the Long Range Waste Removal. Which is why they're now Cleaner Greener.
You didn't like that? Yeah.
So, I just want everyone to understand that background.
Has the, is the Board of Health aware and in support of the administrative requirements that are, that are laid out here?
Yes.
Thank you.
You hosed my question.
Oh, sorry.
Aside from the statistics, what was sort of the reaction of the downtown association? Like?
It was, but fairly positive. I mean, we had a couple people concerned, you know. You know, one business owner, she had, had purchased two years' worth of bags, you know. But we had spoken to the Board of Health to kind of get that answer for her, what would happen. And we informed them that, you know, if they were unable to comply, then they would just need to present it in front of the Board of Health. And then the Board of Health would, you know, decide whether or not, based on what their inventory was, whether or not to keep the, you know, the date in place, or to grant them an extension.
Okay. All right. And then how about, did you, did you speak to the fruit center at all?
I did. I actually met with Mark last week. The fruit center is actually going all reusable in, in May.
Okay.
You know, his, his, one of his questions was in regards to, in the bylaw, that we have it as compostable product bags, not biodegradable. And the reason why I said that was, is because this compostable is, has a defined definition. And that's federally mandated, whereas biodegradable is sort of kind of like a gray area for a definition.
Okay.
So to get a proper definition, it's put in compostable. They, from their standpoint, said that wouldn't be an issue for them.
Okay.
You know.
And I note that it applies not only to the takeaway bags, but the, the product bags that you might put fruit or something like that in.
Correct. Correct. And that's what his, our discussion with him was.
Okay. And does it apply to, to a place like the farmer's market? I'm assuming that falls within any commercial enterprise selling goods, foods, or services?
I think the farmer's market, yeah, it was, yeah. Yeah, farmer's market.
Okay. And is there general, are there, are there things that are materially different in the bylaw that you're presenting than in the state legislation that?
Yeah, one is that we, yeah, one was that we don't have a fee.
A ten, okay.
It'd be a 10 cent fee for paper bags. And the recyclable material part of it.
Okay. And so how do you envision the enforcement by the Board of Health? So I know the Board of Health will, for instance, go down and take the temperature of the, you know, salad bar at different places. Like, would it be citizen complaint, a combination of citizen complaint, and then sort of being out of, around town kind of thing?
It would be, so for its, you know, it's a food establishment, it would be just part of their, just another line item on their checks and balances.
Right.
And, but generally for the other stores, from, it's usually from a citizen's complaint.
Okay.
I can answer to that a little bit anyway. I spoke very briefly, again, a couple of months ago with Susan Sarni, our, our health agent, who did express at the time some concerns about bandwidth from within her department to be doing ad hoc inspections, per se, of different businesses, and to make sure that they're being compliant. So I believe that's the, that's the nexus of Mr. Ayer's comment, that this would be more likely enforced on a complaint basis, rather than a proactive inspectional basis.
I sort of wonder whether, and maybe Advisory Committee will get into this with you, I sort of wonder whether we want to build in slightly more discretion in the enforcement by the Board of Health. It says we, somebody may be penalized, but then it says the following penalty shall apply. And, you know, you have a right to a hearing, but there's no specific sort of right of the Board of Health to grant an extension. So I just, and again, maybe this is more properly before the, before the Advisory Committee to sort of delve into the minutia on this. But, you know, I just think it's, it might take some time and some education to get this thing up and running. And, and I guess I'd like to give the Board of Health the adequate tools to sort of bring the community along on this. But, you know, I'm not sure that's our purview.
Have you received any written comment from Ms. Sarni? Yeah, yeah.
She attended our, our meeting.
Say that again, from who?
Susan, Susan Sarni.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
She attended the Cleaner Greener meeting, and voiced, but you had said initially about not having the bandwidth to do this in a, in a totality, like totality. But when we talked about the citizen, as Andy said, the citizen kind of flagging of things being amiss, she was in support of the Board of Health enforcing it.
Okay. And is that typical, has that been typical for other communities, or maybe even other communities on the South Shore? That's kind of the way, the way this?
Yes.
Gets, okay. You know, I do, to Tom's point, I do appreciate the time that you took to talk with the downtown association and the merchants, because frankly, and I may have said it to somebody, you know, I think that's one of the things that caused this to sort of derail the first time out, was that, you know, as Paul said earlier tonight, you know, I think we, we value our merchant base, and we all need to work together, I think, to make the community better, environmentally better. But we can't leave out sort of their, their concerns with respect to something like this. And so I, you know, I appreciate you being, taking your time to involve them in this conversation.
And I would just add, I think I was Chair of the Advisory Committee in 2015, when this was first percolating. And I think at the time, the hope was expressed that, that this would keep going. And that, you know, it, you know, sometimes, we like articles to go to town meeting when they have the greatest chance of being successful. And I think you've all learned that the socializing piece is, is really important. And I really appreciate that, that you've, that you've brought it back and done the work, and, you know, done all the due diligence. It, when the due diligence is done like that, it's, it's easier to, you know, to, to support it.
And Andrew, could you make those slides available to us?
Yes.
It would be a little bit hard to see.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are they on the Cleaner Greener webpage?
They're going to be.
They're going to be, yeah.
You know, Tom, I would suggest maybe you could follow up with, with the Advisory Committee and the appropriate liaison to, I think Karen's point about, you know, the Board of Health and the ability to grant extensions. I think it's a good idea to memorialize that in a recommended motion, because the Board of Health is an elected position, and so you may have some turnover. And I just think it's going to be really important to just, you know, have a, have a track of that.
Let's talk on that, Andy.
Okay.
It's important to get something in writing.
Okay.
She's saying from the board.
Okay.
I have an observation. 1972, I started working for the town at the dump, recycling. And I've seen it evolve through time. But one of the things that struck me was, has stayed with me, was when I traveled to Tanzania a number of years ago. And I was struck by the, the plastic bags just everywhere floating on, you know, throughout the landscape. And I was thinking to myself, boy, those things are never going to break down. Something's got to be done about this. I don't think anything's going to be done in that neck of the woods, but we can certainly do what we can here. So if you've crafted a solution that seems to agree with the merchants, for you, my man.
And just to let you know, Africa has the most countries currently right now for countrywide bans for plastic bags, yeah. Because of that.
No surprise. It's, yeah, yeah. That's a big place.
Put a lot of effort into this, Andrew.
All right. Public comment, hearing none. How about a motion? Anybody like to?
Yeah, I guess with the, with the, you know, sort of purview, or the hope that you will work through.
Yes.
Okay. I move favorable action on Article U, plastic bag reduction, and encourage reusable bags by law. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Great work, everybody. Thank you.
Nice job.
Great work.
All right, perfect.
Off to the races.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, everybody.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we continue with our warrant articles next week. Now, next on the agenda is a forecast update.
Everyone's favorite part of the day.
Mine.
Mary's.
Mine.
Some more than others.
Okay. So there were a few, the last forecast update I gave, we've had a few substantive changes and updates as information rolls in from the state mainly, but also locally. So if you look on, on your forecast, under the FY 2020 forecast, the bar, the year that's highlighted, you'll see the new growth is now estimated at $1.1 million. That's up $150,000. And that's per some guidance we received from the Building Department. That is from their anticipated building permit revenue, per some continued large developments up on the, on North Hingham, whether it's the Alliance Project and some of the others, as that builds out. The other, the other notable change is under the state aid, under other revenue. Again, in FY 2020, you'll see the total number of $11,258,099. That's anticipated state aid, which represents the, the governor's projected budget of a 2.5%, 2.59% increase over last year. That is, that is early in the process for the state. This is the governor's recommended budget. The legislature has not acted yet. So more to come on that one. We probably won't hear that for some time, as to what actually ends up happening there.
Does that include cherry sheet money? Does school money? Or is it just town, is it just municipal side money?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. On the next page, under the Article 6 detail, I just want to point out that the total town budget for FY 2020 is as I presented it, as my, per my recommendations. The total education budget is as it was presented to the Board of Selectmen, however many meetings ago now, when we had our joint session downstairs. The other interesting news is, we, we heard early from our healthcare provider this year, bless you, the GIC this year, we heard from them, what, Michelle, was it yesterday or the day before, that their increase over last year was going to represent, was, would be about 3.3%, which is down from our, what we carry every year as an anticipated percentage of 10%. So there was some, some savings from the projections there.
And we can rely on that at this point in the process?
Yes, yeah. They called it a projection, but they wouldn't have put it in writing to, you know, everybody in the state if they weren't fairly certain of it.
So is that what we've reduced to, or are we carrying any cushion on that?
That's what, we reduced it to 3.3%.
Okay.
And just the, the last point to make is a general point, and get into details if you'd like, but on the last page, under the 10-year history of the local receipts, you notice in the bottom right, we're at 94.32%. That is just south of our comfort zone of 95%. We don't like to get above that, just because we, we do, here in Hingham, like to, like to project pretty conservatively. And anything north of 95% would certainly start to get iffy. And we don't like to be iffy.
It's not a, it's not a strength, it's not a strength in municipal budgeting, I feel like.
That's right. Exactly.
It's in the manual.
It's in the manual. So, that's the update. If you have any questions, I'd have to go through it. Otherwise, that's that.
Like yesterday.
That's right.
And I just say that, so right now, we've got, you know, a $1.2 million deficit, which I think in past years, that number's been a lot higher at this point in the process.
Yes.
You know, what, what, what that says to me is that with, with collaboration of everybody involved in the budget process, I think we should be able to balance this budget. It, it's not going to be perhaps as difficult as in past years. And I would thank you, and Sue, and Michelle. I think one of the things that we've heard from the Advisory Committee and from the School Committee, is that the earlier we reflect known changes in revenue, the easier the budgeting process is. And I, I think everything's kind of on the table right now. And I, I hope that means that decisions can be made quickly, and in a collaborative fashion.
So the new growth always makes me a little leery. And then, so, because I see you're carrying it at 1.1 in FY 20.
Yep.
And then 1.3 in '21. And I realize that's an out year, but, you know, we've gotten ourselves in trouble in the past in counting on new growth that didn't come in. So these are building permits, and for the money to come in, people actually have to begin construction, right?
Yes.
They've got to put a shovel in the ground.
So these were numbers provided to us by the Building Department, based on what they know and anticipate over the next two years for known projects.
But I would just clarify too, that new growth is when it comes online.
Okay.
So remember that, like, like, so you think about Broadstone Bear Cove, they pull the permit, and that's when we get the permit revenue.
Oh, right, right.
And then the building has to go through and be completed to a certain level for it to roll into new growth. So oftentimes, you know, sometimes there's a lag between the permit revenue and when the new growth comes in. So, you know, if, if you look back at the permit revenue, like, two years ago, it was so high.
Yep.
These are those projects coming on. So, and these are permanent increases to the tax base.
Right.
That's right. And, you know, to that point, if you look in, again, further in the out years on that line, Karen, you're at $550,000, down from 1.3 million.
Right.
You know, not for nothing, but that's the importance of continued economic development in the community. That, that matters, and it matters in a real way in the budget every year. So.
Well, I mean, it goes back to Mary's presentation several months ago, talking about capital projects and really anticipated flat growth. So you've got this little bit of a bump right here, but that's going to even out and fall off. So.
That's right. And economic development protects other, would be things like tax increases.
Yep. Or, or reduction in services.
Or reduction in services. That's right. Speaking on behalf of, as the bureaucrat in the room, that didn't even occur to me.
You had to say what you had to say. Okay. What?
Nothing.
It's snowing, sorry.
You good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, it's eight, it's almost 8:10, it's snowing out. It won't linger. Before we sign off, however, this Saturday is Lincoln Day. And as is the custom, the Board issues a proclamation, which I anticipate will be read at the Old Ship Church. And for those of you that have never been to this ceremony, I strongly recommend it, because it, you know, it's a patriotic ceremony, basically. And it honors the legacy of Benjamin Ben Lincoln.
And Abraham Lincoln.
And General Lincoln, Hingham resident, served a lot of variety of roles in the country's early times. And his house is still standing by the Lincoln statue, and a descendant of his lives there. There's been a move afoot to develop some funding to support a statue honoring his memory. He accepted the Sword of Surrender at the Battle of Yorktown. And that image is iconic in American history. of Surrender at the Battle of Yorktown, and his, that image is iconic in American history. And perhaps the greatest Lincoln of all, Abraham Lincoln, is likewise recognized. Abraham Lincoln, to me, is a hero of this country that stands, you know, Washington, Roosevelt, just a tremendous historic figure. And I find myself reading that, about that era at every opportunity I get. So I'm going to read the proclamation, whether you like it or not, because I really enjoy this, and I hope you do, too. This is the Town of Hingham, Massachusetts proclamation. Whereas, the town of Hingham was settled in 1635 by a small band of Puritan pilgrims, many of whom came from Hingham, England, and environs. And whereas, among the descendants of those original settlers were two famous American public figures who shared the common family name Lincoln, as well as a common heritage. And whereas, it is a longstanding Hingham tradition to honor and celebrate their birthdays, General Benjamin Lincoln, a lifelong Hingham citizen and a hero of the American Revolution, and Abraham Lincoln, our 16th president and the towering figure of the Civil War. And whereas, we honor and celebrate the lives and deeds of the two Lincolns because of the indelible legacy of community building and preservation they have left for us. And whereas, in this year, 2019, we pay special honor to four centuries of our citizens, those famous like Benjamin Lincoln and Abraham Lincoln, and those unknown to history, who worked in myriad ways to build and sustain this wonderful community of Hingham and the broader communities of state and nation. And whereas, the preservation of community is a perpetual task in which each generation must fully participate. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Hingham, do hereby officially proclaim Saturday, February 16th, 2019, Lincoln Day. We urge also that as many citizens as possible join us at the Old Ship Meeting House on Saturday, February 16th, 2019, at 11:00 a.m. for a patriotic ceremony of celebration. And finally, we urge each citizen to take to heart the examples of the two Lincolns and those of four centuries of Hingham residents, and we urge each citizen to participate in some concrete way in the strengthening and preservation of this community of Hingham and the broader communities of state and nation for the generations which will succeed us. Given our hands and seal of Hingham this 12th day of February 2019, Paul K. Healy, Mary E. Empower, Karen A. Johnson. So, hope to see you Saturday, and if you don't, you heard the proclamation. But it sounds a lot better in Old Ship Church. All right. Shell.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thomas.
Nothing, thank you.
Karen?
I just wish Randy and his crew good luck, as well as the public safety folks. It's slippery on those roads, so please, everybody, take care. And I'm certain that you and Mary will talk about our adventures this weekend at the, at the Historical Society.
I'll, I'll talk about Saturday. Saturday was Family History Day, and walking into the Heritage Museum, there were probably 40 children under the age of five sitting on the floor with stuffed animals and someone reading a book and young families, and then walking upstairs and seeing high school students who had created exhibits, written papers. Most of them were juniors at Hingham High School. The quality of the work was just wonderful. Their teachers were engaged. You know, when, when we thought about the Heritage Museum, I, I just walked in there and I thought, this is, this is it. This is what we wanted it to be, a place where the community came together, and, you know, just really appreciative of Deirdre Anderson and the great work she's doing, and all of the trustees. And also, I got a glimpse of the Lincoln Chair, which was, which was also nice to see. I just mentioned two other things. Last night, the, the Board, I represented the Board, and Tom and Michelle were there. The Advisory Subcommittee for the Water Acquisition held another hearing. This was the second hearing that they held last week. Karen was there, along with Tom, Michelle, and I. It was about a two and a half hour discussion. It was recorded and is up on Harbor Media. So for those who missed it, we covered an awful lot of ground, very thoughtful questions, very helpful conversation. And just the other thing, earlier this week, I met with one of the representatives from the Hingham Residents Against the Compressor Station. You know, the Board recently took a vote to join Wamouth in the appeal of the air quality permit, and we talked about ways that, ways that we can engage kind of from a political end, and different things, and we'll be getting together maybe just kind of once a month to see where we are, what's happening, what can we do to provide support to our colleagues in Wamouth. And it was, it was very helpful.
We attended a, an appreciation brunch at the Old Ship at the Heritage Museum, Sunday, to thank the generosity of some of our citizens here in town that have contributed to make that place what it is. I did sit in the Lincoln Chair, but...
You're not supposed to.
It's the replica.
Oh, all right.
As gift. They have, they have the actual chair... Behind a rope, and then they have a reproduction, so you can get the true sense of it. It's not that comfortable, to be honest with you. It was, it was interesting. You know, and I want to thank the people that are here tonight at Town Hall, you know, came out in a snowstorm, doing the town's work. It'd be real easy, kind of just to sit back in the easy chair and, you know, tune in the TV, but they're not. They're here, and they're working for, for you, for the town, to make this a better place. And that, to me, speaks to the dedication and the commitment of the community, and working for the common good. We're, we're fortunate, and, you know, I'm relying on that, that sense of, you know, commitment and goodwill as, as we move forward on this discussion with respect to the acquisition of the water company. This, I'm going to keep saying it, this is a generationally important decision that we're being called to make. And make no mistake about it, this is of such importance. And, you know, when I look at some of the things that people who have long since left this earth decided to do here in Hingham, I, I feel an obligation to, to work as hard as I can with my colleagues and with the people, the good people, who have put so much time into this worthy effort, to do our best to persuade and convince you that this is the right step for this town to take. And I ask that you not be distracted or misled by a, a counter message. We, we come to you with, you know, the purest of motives and hearts. We only want what's good for this community. So I'd ask that, you know, in, in the coming weeks, you accept the message in the light that it's intended. So thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.